Okay, I'd like to call the meeting of the planning board order. Has this meeting been posted in the local public?
Yes, it has.
It's fine. You've all received a copy of the minutes. Do you hear your motions or accept the minutes as they're posted?
Second.
All right. Let's get it. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry. Shall we start?
Okay, so we're gonna start with the...
With Lakewood's first.
With Lakewood application.
Yes, we'll take a rest just a little bit and do all the Lakewoods first.
Lakewood, minor subdivision, lot two, block four eighteen, Esther Creighton. This two-lot minor subdivision is for the construction of two duplex units located on a local road with eight proposed parking spaces. County facilities are not impacted, approval recommended.
Move it.
Second by Ellen. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. So moved.
Lakewood, minor subdivision, lots thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, block four thirty. Claire Drive LLC. This five-lot minor subdivision is for five single-family houses to be located on a local road with twenty proposed parking spaces. County facilities are not impacted, approval recommended.
Do you hear a motion?
Move it.
Question by Ellen. Second by Alan. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sure. Question.
Question on this, on this Claire Drive. Why is that not a major subdivision that has impact fees?
Because Lakewood has determined it to be a minor and anything determining the number of lots or conditions is by municipal ordinances. And the municipal ordinance permits, I'm assuming in Lakewood, whatever.
Eight. We've had eight.
You know, so...
As a minor.
So, that's purely within the jurisdiction of Lakewood Township Committee to determine what your minor or majors are.
I'll tell you why I'm asking. They came for the planning board and they were trying to separate the road and doing the lots separate and the roads separate because that makes it into a minor and not a major. I don't know the rules.
Right, because the Land Use Act requires if there's a new road being installed, it would automatically be a major.
And this is a new road being installed?
But, again, that's the local level. We, and it's not an Ocean County road. So, a municipal road, and again, it's how Lakewood does their ordinances, so I have to, and I don't know them by heart, I'll be honest with you, Lakewood's ordinances, that is. So, the Municipal Land Use Act, state legislation, says the municipalities can determine the number and the extent which will be deemed a minor versus a major subdivision. The Planning Act, or Municipal Land Use Act, says whatever that number is, or an improved road, it should be a major.
And this has an unapproved road that they're approving now, so that should be a major. Who said that it's a minor?
Lakewood.
Lakewood has said, yeah.
Lakewood has said it's a minor.
Lakewood didn't say it because Lakewood says if there's a road, you have to improve a road, it's still a major.
Again, that's the consideration for that municipal ordinance. I don't know specifically the definition of major and minor in Lakewood, so I can't speak to that specifically. But the Municipal Land Use Act requires the municipality to make that determination. And one of the things that they need to consider is if a road, a new road, if you will, not an improved road, but a new road is being installed. So, how Lakewood did that and determined that it was a minor, Lakewood Planning Board, that is.
Lakewood didn't approve it yet. It didn't, it was not approved by Lakewood Plan. They came and they outright denied it. So, usually people come after the planning board approval to the county, they don't have to. But in this case, I know that was denied and they're coming over here claiming that it's a minor when it's technically a major. I, I just...
If it comes back, if it goes back to Lakewood and they determine it is a major, then they would have to come back here again after that, too, because it's a modified application.
So, from your standpoint, this is a minor because they're not improving a road?
No, this, our standpoint is it's a minor because that's what the applicant, exactly. So, we have to rely upon that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
The next one's a minor, too.
Yes, I think we have the lowest and the second we need.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. So moved.
Lakewood, minor subdivision, lot one, block ten twenty-five, Vine Property Holdings LLC. This nine-lot minor subdivision is located on a local road and is part of the overall Oak Street Corridor Improvement Plan for one hundred and seventy-nine duplexes of three hundred and fifty-eight units and three single-family home dwellings. This application is for four duplex buildings of eight units and one single-family house on nine proposed lots with thirty-six proposed parking spaces. Ocean County facilities are not impacted, approval recommended.
Do you hear any questions?
Actually, the main purpose of me coming over here was for this type of Oak Street corridor.
This, oh, okay.
I was heavily involved and it's right next to me, so I know a lot about this ordinance. Basically, they had, came to the township committee and approved by the township committee three hundred and seventy-nine units with the road infrastructures, with the housing, with the site plan, with everything, was approved by the township committee. Township committee told them this, now we want you to go to administrative approval, just do the administrative stuff to make sure that everything is compliance and all that. But you don't need approval anymore because we did it. How Lakewood Township was compliance with the MLUL, don't know. That's not, that's not my expertise. All I'm saying is, they came as a major subdivision and they got it approved through the township committee. Coming over here afterwards and claiming that it's minor, even if the applicant testified this way is, I don't know if I could testify, but I could testify it's wrong. Because it's a, it's one of the biggest subdivisions that was done on Lakewood in recent years, except of Westgate in nineteen ninety-nine. And this, you know, I know we went back and forth, we spoke about it with a planner, he was very nice in explaining it to me. And he got stuck by the end and he told me his, their attorneys are determining that it's a minor because Lakewood is determining it's a minor. I looked up the ordinance, it doesn't say anything that it's a minor. It says that they're doing, they're proving everything and now they could go for administrative approval. So, what is it, it's like going for the planning board, getting approval on subdivision, and then they're going in every lot by the administrative to make sure that everything is compliance and all that. So, I, the difference is not that it's any drainage or anything like that. The issue is the county impact fees, that the county is losing a lot of money with approving it this way. And when they went for this approval by the township committee, I never understood why they, why couldn't they go to the planning board? They, they were compliant with the zone, with everything. Everything was kosher. Why couldn't they go to the planning board? They didn't need any variances. And I was wrapping around my head until I realized that it's done because of, to fool the county. So, and we didn't have an opportunity then to speak, but the planning board's missing a lot of roads, sidewalks, and whatever, that's not your concern. Your concern is that I think the applicant is trying to defraud the county with the impact fees. So, all I'm requesting, again, you're a planning board, you could decide, that the attorney should look over the ordinance and to see if the applicant is, it's actually the way he's stating it is. And it's not like a loophole, but in my opinion, when we asked attorneys, we said this whole ordinance is illegal because they, by MLUL, you have to go to the planning board. But nobody contested it as far as going to court, so therefore is, it's the law of the land. But to come and say that this is, that Lakewood determined with this ordinance that it's a minor and not a major, when they approved it as a whole, as a major, and it became now technically a minor, and now they need county approval, I don't think Lakewood could determine when they need county approval or when not.
Well, under the MLUL, the county reviews every subdivision, major, minor, it doesn't matter.
Right.
However, we can only, or the county planning board can only opine, if you will, or take action with respect to the drainage or the traffic impact on county roads. So, in my understanding, these are all municipal roads. So, even if it came through as a major, if it's not abutting a county road, we would not have impact fees, correct?
Correct.
So, even a major subdivision, that might, maybe I didn't understand it right.
Yeah.
If it's a major subdivision, if it's not next to a county road, you don't just automatically charge impact fees?
Correct. Unless it's a, unless it's directly, yeah. Unless it's directly impacting a county road.
Right.
If there's one little stub of a street that's municipal, that's going into a huge development and that's the only way in and out onto a county road, then we can logically say these houses, or duplexes, or whatever they are, are going to affect the county road, even though it doesn't directly abut a county road? Or, obviously, if it is right along a county road, then, fronting on a county road, then that's a direct impact.
So, you're saying is they didn't, they wouldn't be charged impact fees regardless? That's different than they told me yesterday. That's why I'm asking.
The application fee might be different, minor versus major.
The application fee might be different, but also depending on the location and the proximity of the development to the county road and the potential for people that live in these homes or the future residents of these homes would then be utilizing county roads more directly. I mean, while they might be on a local road, that local road would then eventually feed to a county road, but this area feeds out to Route Nine as well as...
Vine and Oak.
And Vine and Oak.
Oak is... A county road.
Oak is a county road.
Is Oak County Road?
I was actually complaining that it doesn't go out to Oak and they testified that it does go out to Oak. I remember that.
Okay.
And originally.
I don't, I don't have the, I don't have the road book with me to, to confirm that.
Oak is a county road. We did the intersection improvements in the year.
Okay.
And because Route Nine is so blocked and all of it's so blocked, so that Oak Street access will be used a lot. Not only for the residents over there, it's for me to cut through over there. But that was my misunderstanding from yesterday. I thought is that every major subdivision gets an impact fee.
No, it has to have a rational relationship to its proximity to a county road. And the, you know, whether it's feeding onto or the basis for the use of the county road, if you will.
Sorry for...
No, no, that's okay. Questions are good because they also help this board understand what's going on in the local level that we don't have...
We have major problems at the local level, but the local level, they come and we were complaining about it and says, oh, we have access to Oak Street. And over here, they don't mention anything about it.
Right, right.
That's very convenient.
Yeah, because this particular portion of that overall project...
But they are separating it when it's one thing. They went to CAFRA together as one applicant, they went to the township committee as one applicant, they're doing the roads as one applicant, the infrastructure, they're doing everything together. It's, it's like one application. And to come over here and saying is, oh, we're going to do just one, two, and then it's not connecting or whatever. And when they came as a plan, they say, yeah, it is connecting, look, it's nice grids and everything, you know?
Oh, we, I'm sure we can get...
But they're all, but they're all different, but they're all, all of these minors are coming in as different owners. They're not the, the owner that, that presented it to Lakewood. Is that correct?
The applicant is the same. They call themselves...
They're according to this?
Developer, I don't remember, Oak Street developers.
Yeah, but all of, but all of the applicants that are on these applications are, are different names.
Yes, but what I'm saying is when an applicant comes in, in any municipal, becomes one applicant with a lot of lot owners and they, they get subdivided accordingly, whatever deals they have. There's never like one applicant is the same owner. That's the reason why you have to file a affidavit of applicant, a affidavit of ownership. Because a lot of times, it's different ownership and different, over here, that, the way it determines in the municipal, what is a minor, you see, the previous Claire Drive was also separate owners. But because they're coming as one applicant, it's considered a major or minor accordingly. It, everything has to do with the applicant, not with the ownership. I'm just trying to be, I'm just used to this already because I'm sitting in township and I know you guys work, think things differently, but you're telling me you're going accordingly to them, so.
Yeah, and that's...
Applicant. All the applicant, all...
We also, we rely on the truth and veracity of these applications.
With them getting it, that they still have to go to the administrative approval is basically lying, I'm not, I don't want to say the word lying, but listen, derailing you. When they got the approval to get the whole thing done and then the township said that every lot should go make sure that he is compliant with all zoning or whatever, it does mean is that they got, they were able to go for new approval for minor by the township. It was just an administrative thing to make sure that they're complying with the ordinance. The ordinance is actually what gave them the approval.
Yeah.
So, when they're coming over here, they have to come as a whole. They can't come as separate. They could come as separate, but you have to treat them as a whole, like whenever you think there is approval, you can't just say township approved the subdivision. Now, every lot owner from that subdivision will come extra to you. That's what's happening over here.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
I have a question. Engineer told me earlier that they technically should, when they come in for an application to the township, it should come to the county level as well. And really, the initial part should came in together instead of later on, each section individually.
I made the same point.
Yeah, and, and...
And that's why we wouldn't...
Ninety-nine percent of the time...
If that's the way, if that's the way you're gonna apply to the township, it should, it should be, it should be a, what's your name, it should be in a, in...
It could, but they don't have to.
It should be, it should be, the same set of plans basically should be going to everyone at the same time.
Correct.
Simultaneously. Simultaneously, in a proper, in a flowing, in a, I'm losing that word.
So that we're, we're all looking at the same...
Right. And, and they're getting approval based on the same thing.
Right.
Everyone's on the same page.
I don't want to say, use the word assume, but here at this level, the county planning board does assume that they are the same things that are being presented to the, we would, we would have no reason to disbelieve that or, but, so we trust that that's in fact what hap, what should be happening.
Well, just based on the statistics, since we're fifty percent of applications, please don't consider us like the rest of the counties.
Oh, no, no.
No, I'm serious. You're gonna consider like the rest of the county, you treat everyone, which were definitely different.
They have a CAFRA permit for all the new roads.
There's a reason why we're higher because things are easier to get if you're doing Lakewood anywhere else.
And the drainage, yes.
You know, you have one standard for him, you know, for everyone.
So, the roads were approved.
This is, this is an, this is an old subdivision that's being revitalized now.
I think we should do a little bit more research to see, I'm, I'm, I don't know if I can testify.
The sun is just setting, so I'm, I'm sorry.
It's not like I'm testifying over here, it's not as formal, a way of speaking.
I believe we have a copy of it.
But I could, I'm just familiar with this project and I'm almost certain that an applicant derailed you. There's other things going on, the reason why they did it, but I think you should look into it and to see, if I'm incorrect, I'm incorrect.
And the, and the county...
Counselor, can we move the question?
Yes, you can move the question. I can just say for the record, the county engineer and planning staff can always double-check and verify the statements made in any application to make sure they in fact conform to what's being presented on the application. And we can do that and we should do that. We haven't had to before this, but maybe it's something that we can look into. But, and as far as it affecting Oak Avenue, if that section of Oak Avenue is in fact a county road, that would have an impact.
Do I hear a motion to a...
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Ellen, second by Alan. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. So moved.
Okay, Lakewood, minor subdivision, lot eight, block ten twenty-six, applicant SGKL LLC. This six-lot minor subdivision is located on a local road and is part of the overall Oak Street Corridor Improvement Plan for one hundred and seventy-nine duplexes of three hundred and fifty-eight units and three single-family home dwellings. This application is for three duplex units, three duplex buildings of six units on six proposed lots with twenty-four proposed parking spaces. Ocean County facilities are not impacted, approval recommended.
Move it.
Motion by Ellen, second by...
I didn't mean to speak by every single one, but I didn't understand what happened in the past one accord of a concern about Oak Street being impacted. And the motion was not considered that, what, what was it?
The, the motion was to approve it because it didn't, that particular plan did not have an effect on Oak Street or a county road.
So, you, you don't take this, this thing as one application, even though they're coming as separate?
We have to look at what the application is.
Even though, even though the original was a big approval and now it's coming as separate. That means it's, that, that, this is a new loophole that Lakewood developers could do when they have an approval of a whole development and at local level, they could come over here and separate it and claiming is, don't give us impact fees because we're not exactly to the road because we're a block away even though it's in the same approval.
Yeah, it's...
Did you shade when they first approved it?
I'm getting the same question, but...
Yeah, and I, it's hard to tell from this plan how far removed we are from Oak Street.
You can see where the colored section.
It seems to be that what...
Yeah, but I, I don't know where Oak Street is in relation to that. It's not, yeah, the key map.
When Mr. Chairman, can I discuss? The original map of the Oak Street Corridor development, it does say on top over there, sorry. This is the whole section that they're talking about. This was the whole Oak Street Corridor section. Okay, and over here, I think is, Oak Street is like right over here, if I'm correct. Over here, I don't, it's very hard to see. So, this whole thing came as one big development and they approved it as one big development, one three hundred and seventy-nine units and now they're coming as a...
The, I, the application that was presented was to build all the roads so that all the roads would be existing at the time these sub, that these lots get developed. So, they, they applied for a CAFRA permit, got a permit to approve, to build the roads, and that's what they got the permit to build, was the roads.
And the units. They had specific amount of units.
They have a number of units, that's correct, so that...
Where the units are going to be.
Well, the units are wherever they, wherever these individual minor subdivisions come in that are in roads. This, this is like the roads already exist, the way they're presenting this, as if they were on an existing municipal road and this was a sub, a minor subdivision on that.
So, then any, every application that goes for an application could approve the roads as far as the county is concerned, be, approve the roads first and then come to the county saying is, we've got, we've got this whole thing as a new application of roads and houses. We approve the roads first and therefore don't charge us impact fees because the whole road is already approved.
Yeah, the, we have no control of municipal roads, so, or even review of municipal roads.
If they're building those municipal roads and they go through and build the roads in accordance with the CAFRA approval that they get for those roads, then that's what they...
No, I'm just thinking, make it a difference between every application could do the same thing. Build, get, get, have four acres of, ten acres of land, you have a subdivision of seven units, it's coming up soon. They, they, it's a paper street. You approve the paper street, in the township, you approve the paper street and everything together, but now, if, you charge them an impact fee, but if you don't have a, if the developer goes and he develops their roads first and he waits for it to come to the approval afterwards to just get the houses, then he doesn't have to pay the impact fees because he already built the roads.
Yeah.
I'm talking about, what is this getting different treatment than every application that is a major subdivision?
Yeah. And again, no, go ahead.
Is it the distinction here that this was, this was, this area of Lakewood was previously subdivided? And it's in multiple ownerships?
It's in multiple ownerships, that's correct.
So, in essence, the town required all of the individual property owners to come up with an overall development plan that provides for roads and drainage. And these individual minors that we're seeing are really the implementation of that overall development plan, piecemeal perhaps in your mind, but consistent with the overall Oak Street Development Plan in terms of the number of units, the road system, and the drainage system.
Right, because...
So, the one, the one thing that we might have staff check is to make sure that, that these plans are consistent with that overall Oak Street Development Plan, which CAFRA and the town have approved.
Correct.
Which we would not have approved.
Correct. We, we would be verifying the total number. We're tallying the number of all these lots as they come through to make sure that we don't exceed the lots. We have, we have another development similar to this around the, around the baseball stadium. There's a subdivision, a large subdivision there where it was originally subdivided and as they are coming in, they are developing each of those lots, but those lots were, was created as a, as an original subdivision with, with undeveloped lots. And now the lots are coming in and being developed and they had an overall CAFRA permit for that, which identified total square footage and number of parking spaces and impervious coverage. And we are reviewing that as those come in.
So, wouldn't this really be analogous to a more typical major subdivision that comes before the county, that we would approve the roads and so forth?
This is a little bit worse than...
Well, I, let me just finish here. A normal sub, major subdivision would come in and it would show the traffic and drainage and road system. And then individually, the, the plan would come in for approvals on, on a section basis. And aren't these really, in essence, the sections of the major subdivision approval granted by the town and CAFRA?
And, and the network is an existing subdivision, so they're just re-subdividing the lots that were in that original subdivision because the roads are being, now being built and they're getting the CAFRA approval for the roads, the utility extensions, the drainage and all of that. It's not, there's no change, it's not a new subdivision. Those lots are there and they're just reconfiguring those lots.
I understand.
It's not like, it's not like a, it's not like they took all of that property, vacated the streets, and then recreated a new network, a new development. This is basically developing an old...
Paper street.
Paper development that the lots are just being reconfigured.
Correct.
But they're not adding more units. It's the same amount of units and square footage.
Well, the only, the only difference in the number of units is the number of, of units that they, they subdivide the lots in because the, the original development probably had twenty-five-foot wide lots because that was the way the lots were developed originally. Twenty-five by hundreds or what, hundred and twenties, whatever the depth of the block, you know, half the depth of the block is. So, they're just reconfiguring the number of lots that are in that block based on the lots that they have in common ownership by each application. Because not, not each block is being fully developed because not everybody, not all the property owners in that area were a party to that application, that major...
CAFRA.
That major CAFRA application.
And plus the township ordinance that gave them the approval, that's the difference between even more than he's saying is, because they went to the township and getting everything approved, like you're going every subdivision to the planning board, and they did it as one application. They didn't do it as application because it went by ordinance, but the ordinance approved it like by the planning board and one development and one piece. He just can't come afterwards and saying is, hey, to the Ocean County, over there by the township, like she said before, she was, this was part of the major Oak Street Corridor, one hundred and seventy-nine units.
Well, it's within, it's within the confines of that.
So, they got this approval this way.
Well, it's in, within the confines of the ordinance that they passed.
And the ordinance was passed, it's not only passed that they do a, do a new zone, this was zoned already for that. The, the ordinance did, that it gave them the approval to build. So, if that happens, it's like, what makes difference between application that comes over... in with a lot of paper streets, you will consider that as one if they went to the planning board as one. Over here, they went to the township committee as one. So it, it looks to me in the township committee's ordinance as worded that way as one. They have it in the map like that.
But each, but each of these applications that are coming in aren't the same application, aren't the same applicant as the one that went in for all of the roads.
By you.
Because, because you're seeing every one of these, there's, there's some duplicate names, but there are various, there are various different applicants and the applicants create the application and they, they stand on their own merit because they are a finite area of land that's being identified here in the application.
Yeah, I'm not going to keep your time.
Yeah.
We're going to service.
I know. But I think...
What all I'm looking for is, and I'm probably, I'll speak to him after meeting because I don't want to keep your time, what defines coming to you, something that makes it, somebody gets, applicant goes, separate owners goes to the county planning board, it looks to me that after they come to you, if they went, the one applicant going to the planning board, they consider it as one and it's called a major and they can divide it versus if they come separately to the planning board, they could come separate, if they can, they can. So what defines over here that they could come separate because they went to the township ordinance and that's something that I, we will go on circles and I understand.
But yeah, the MLUL says whatever the municipality says is a minor versus a major.
Municipality didn't say it's a minor. The value said it's...
Well, in their, in, not say it with respect to this particular development, but what their ordinances say.
So why, that, this is my question to him and I, I guess he will explain it to me. I don't want to keep you guys. Every time that somebody comes with a one application for seventy homes in Lakewood, make a subdivision, that is not part of the street, they're making them the streets. Why can't they come over here separately on every individual lot and not claim that it's one thing and they're not a major? They could claim they're miners because they're coming to you separately now, that they got it already subdivided by the local level.
Just the, the major and minors just determined on the local level. That's all I can say. When they come here, their application says a minor and it was treated as a major in that municipality?
This is what happened over here because by the ordinance, it was treated as a major because it was one.
Yeah, but we can't say, other than saying, well, no, it was a major at the local level or whatever, but when it's here, if the town allowed it to be treated as a minor, we have to treat it as a minor. We can't override that decision.
Okay. Can I ask an issue? Any questions? Okay, we need to move the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Post.
Which one? I don't know, we just approved.
We approved Lat 1927.
Okay.
And you made the original motion, the first motion. Okay, so Lakewood Minor Subdivision, Lot 7, Block 1027, Yosef Rabinowitz. This two lot minor subdivision is located on a local road and is part of the overall Oak Street corridor improvement plan for one hundred and seventy-nine duplexes of three hundred and fifty-eight units and three single-family home dwellings. This application is for one duplex building of two units on two proposed lots with eight proposed parking spaces. Ocean County facilities are not impacted, approval recommended.
Yeah. Second. Second by Alan. Any, any questions on this?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post.
Okay, Lakewood Minor Subdivision, Lot 8, Block 1027, Oak Vine Development LLC. This four lot minor subdivision is located on a local road and is part of the overall Oak Street corridor improvement plan for one hundred and seventy-nine duplexes of three hundred and fifty-eight units and three single-family home dwellings. This application is for two duplex units, two duplex buildings of four units on four proposed lots with sixteen proposed parking spaces. Ocean County facilities are not impacted and approval recommended.
Move it. Yeah. Motion by Elaine, second by Chip. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post. So moved.
Lakewood Minor Subdivision, Lots 4 and 5, Block 1035, Oak Vine Development LLC. This eight lot minor subdivision is located on a local road and is part of the overall Oak Street corridor improvement plan for one hundred and seventy-nine duplexes of three hundred and fifty-eight units and three single-family home dwellings. This application is for four duplex buildings of eight units on four proposed lots with thirty-two proposed parking spaces. Ocean County facilities are not impacted, approval recommended.
Any motion?
Move it.
Motion by Elaine, second by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post. So moved.
Lakewood Minor Subdivision, Lot 6, Block 1035, Shavat 2 LLC. This two lot minor subdivision is located on a local road and is part of the overall Oak Street corridor improvement plan for one hundred and seventy-nine duplexes of three hundred and fifty-eight units and three single-family home dwellings. This application is for one duplex building of two units on two proposed lots with eight proposed parking spaces. Ocean County facilities are not impacted, approval recommended.
Move it. Motion by Elaine, second by Chip. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post. So moved.
Lakewood Minor Subdivision, Lot 7, Block 1037, SGKL LLC. This four lot minor subdivision is located on a local road and is part of the overall Oak Street corridor improvement plan for one hundred and seventy-nine duplexes of three hundred and fifty-eight units and three single-family home dwellings. This application is for two duplex buildings of four units on four proposed lots with sixteen proposed parking spaces. Ocean County facilities are not impacted, approval recommended.
Yeah. Motion by Chip, second by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post. So moved.
Lakewood Minor Subdivision, Lot 1, Block 1038, SCS Property Group LLC. This four lot minor subdivision is located on a local road and is part of the overall Oak Street corridor improvement plan for one hundred and seventy-nine duplexes of three hundred and fifty-eight units and three single-family home dwellings. This application is for two duplex buildings of four units on four proposed lots with sixteen proposed parking spaces. Ocean County facilities are not impacted, approval recommended.
Motion by Elaine.
Yeah.
Second by Chip. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post.
Lakewood Minor Subdivision, Preliminary and Final, Lot Number 15 and 100, Block 251.02, Zirron Hyam. This eight lot minor subdivision with thirty-two proposed parking spaces is located at the intersection of West Cross Street and White Road. In lieu of providing a full traffic report, the applicant has provided an acceptable trip generation statement. Ocean County requires the applicant to address the following items. One, identify the full width and half width of, and right-of-way of Cross Street. Two, since the existing right-of-way half width is less than thirty-three feet from center line, submit a deed of dedication and meets and bounds description for an additional right-of-way dedication to thirty-three feet from center line to Ocean County as well as the corner clip right-of-way dedication from the PC to the PT of the curb return. Three, revise the plans to properly show the county right-of-way line in front of the adjoining property. Four, revise the curb return at the intersection to be thirty-five feet radius consistent with Section 610E. Five, submit a site right easement form and meets and bounds description for two site triangles at the intersection in accordance with county standards to Ocean County. Six, construct the handicap ramps at the driveway and intersection in accordance with current federal ADA standards to be reviewed and approved by the Ocean County engineer. Seven, revise the final plaque to include three corner coordinates in accordance with the map filing law. Eight, remove the existing walls from, within the county right-of-way, dimension the distance from the property line to the edge of the driveway to meet the minimum county standard for a residential driveway and design the proposed driveway to the county road for a single-family residence driveway on Lot 15.08 in accordance with Section 606. Nine, indicate the proposed curb is to be built twenty-six feet from center line along West Cross Street in accordance with Section 612B. Ten, provide cross-sections for the county road indicating the limit of pavement reconstruction to maintain a two percent cross slope and positive gutter flow. Eleven, provide retrofit plates on all catch basin inlets to protect downstream water quality. Twelve, add the following Ocean County standard notes for the projects located on county roads. A, add a note to the plan indicating that any utility pole relocations within the limit of the proposed road widening on the county road are to be completed prior to the issuance of the road opening permit from the Ocean County engineer's office. B, add a note to the plan indicating the developers required to obtain a road opening permit from the Ocean County engineering department prior to the start of construction of any improvements or soil erosion control measures within the county right-of-way. C, add a note to the plan indicating that developers shall obtain a letter of final acceptance from the Ocean County engineer for their county road improvements prior to the issuance of a TCO/CO from the municipality and a release of any bond or other financial surety posted with the municipality for the completion of said improvement. D, add a note to the plan indicating alignment and grade for curb and road improvements along the county road shall be established by the developers' engineers approved by the Ocean County engineer. Stakeout of all curb and road improvements shall be the responsibility of the developer and shall be executed by a licensed New Jersey professional land surveyor. Curb as built shall be submitted to the Ocean County engineer prior to any paving operations. Final as-built information shall be supplied on a reproducible medium which will include top and bottom of curb, center line, and quarter crown grades. Monuments where applicable shall be signed and sealed by a licensed New Jersey professional land surveyor and accompanied by a monument certification where applicable. E, add a note to the plan indicating that county road improvements must have base course prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy. Thirteen, pay an off-track drainage improvement fee in an amount to be determined by the Ocean County engineer. And fourteen, pay an off-track traffic improvement fee in an amount to be determined by the Ocean County engineer. Approval recommended upon fulfillment of the above contingencies. All of the above conditions must be addressed in order to obtain Ocean County planning board approval, stamp and signature, and construction shall not commence until all conditions have been met.
Thank you very much. I'm trying to whistle.
You said that we accepted their trip generation and rule of the traffic study already?
We did.
Yes, because they submitted a, a request for that when they, when they provided it and based on the number of units, their trip generation was representative of the number of units including the basements.
And it was based on it...
Yes.
Being rentable basement.
Correct. So we, we've, we've reviewed that and, and considered that because it is, while it is a major subdivision, it's a smaller major subdivision.
Sir, before you, before you got, we officially never got your name because you just...
Schlem Klein, S-H-L-O-M-A. Last name is Klein, K-L-E-I-N.
Thank you very much.
Let me see something.
Yes.
I looked at the engineering report because that's not the, your engineering report, the engineer, the traffic study downstairs, they, I was asking to inspect the documents that were very nice to me. I must, you know, you guys are doing a great job. I looked at the, the traffic study and it's calculated on seven units. Now, I know I was told by the planner and the engineer that you guys are calculating it with the basements, but the problem that I have is that you're, you're quoting that their traffic study is okay and in the same token, their traffic study does not calculate the basements, they only calculate the upstairs. I'm not saying is that you didn't calculate it, I'm just, it's a language thing.
Correct.
That it says their calculations is good when their calculation does not reflect. And it's giving like an appro, even if you did your own calculation and you have a report saying is we're calculating fourteen when this is seven, but the fact that there's a report now saying that their calculations is okay is very bothersome to me.
Well, I think what you have to look at is, is the number of trip, while they might say seven, the number of trips that they allocated for it is that the trips during the peak hour are taking into account that that seven really represents fourteen because the number, the number that's used for that trip generation for that unit is an, is a, an elevated number to take into account the, the basement apartments in the future.
Wouldn't it say in the report something to that extent?
It should say that, yes.
It doesn't.
Okay, well then I will verify, but in all, in all...
I'm bringing out a point.
In all respects, that's what, that's what the intent is and our traffic engineer understands that number and based on the fact that it's only seven and it's really fourteen.
I'm not, I'm not trying to do anything on this application. I assume that, I just, as I told you before, I will look into the reports and what you're recommending if it reflects on what you're saying. So I assume that this is exactly what's happening.
Right, this is, this is some of the...
And this was like an oversight, but I, this is what we're looking into, that, that it should reflect in the record.
To make sure the numbers and the verbiage reflects what's really being evaluated.
And one more thing that I have, just a question that says that you allocate impact fees determined by the engineer. Now, this is not done by the board, I guess it's done by the engineer themselves. And in Lakewood, over here, I wouldn't have had a problem, but in Lakewood, I would have had a major problem with that because if somebody is good friends with the engineer or with the engineering company, I thought, "What's Lakewood?" I'm sorry.
Just so you know, what happens is the engineer, once it's all flushed out and the conditions are met, the engineer gives a number here at this meeting.
At this meeting.
So it becomes part of the record, so it's not...
So you're voting on that?
We vote on it again.
Okay.
And you'll see that...
Yes.
As we go along.
So that, nothing happens untoward like that.
Whenever that vote comes up, it will be like a public...
Correct.
That you'll have it online as an agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chairman, could I just make a suggestion perhaps that, that the minutes reflect that the traffic generation submitted by the applicant is based on fourteen units and, and the appropriate peak traffic generation.
Trips, right. Correct.
And that, that makes, that takes into account his concern that, that there is a misconception of the number.
Correct.
So it should say which is based on fourteen units?
Well, it's based, the, the trip generation rate is based on the unit representing a, 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 a standard unit plus the basement apartment. It's the, it's the trip generation rate that is, is that, so that it's still identified as seven, but the rate takes into account that there's a, a main unit and a basement unit. And we will verify that that's the case in that report. We have been, we have been doing that in the past to make sure that, that they are making that correct statement, at least identifying the number of units and identifying the trip gener, the rate as it relates to a, a unit with a main unit and a basement apartment unit.
Thank you.
Alan, will you make a motion?
I'll make a motion with that, with that amendment. Thank you.
Very well.
I'll say it.
Second by Chip. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any more discussion? Post. Yes, it all in favor?
Oh, you did? Oh, I'm sorry. Lakewood Minor Subdivision, Lot 17 and 18, Block 247, Jody Gelb. This four lot minor subdivision is for the demolition of two houses and the construction of four duplexes to be located on a local road. County facilities are not impacted, approval recommended.
Any motion?
Yeah.
Yep, second by Elaine. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post. So moved. That is the last of our Lakewood subjects. Sir, would you like to make any final statement?
No, perfectly happy. I'll, I'm just going to shut my camera now because it doesn't reflect the Lakewood, so...
Okay. And you're, don't forget your...